Okay. I'm going to call the meeting of the August twenty sixth regular meeting of important education order. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder, if anybody wants to speak, Mrs. Berman has courage. First item on our agenda is approved amendments of the regular meeting of July twenty second and August twenty.
I move that.
Miss Davis. And by Mr. Bowe, any discussion? All in favor? Minister Blake, are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
There is an additional sheet of walk-ons provided for you all of recent hires from the twenty third yesterday afternoon until the second. Hires and or presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So we will need to do a motion to add.
Okay, bring this to the report of the superintendent.
Evening, everybody. Welcome. A lot cooler inside than it is in Staley. So thank you so much for joining us on our visit. My my comments tonight really are just on the opening of schools. So there's some information that we have available due to some of the governor's most recent commentary. Nothing yet in writing, so details are still pretty fuzzy on some things, but I can tell you what it looks like we need to expect as we get ready here in the next few days to weeks. First and foremost, everyone's probably heard right now, the governor hopeful is planning to mandate universal masking in all school facilities. I believe that we expect to have language on that Monday or Tuesday. When we receive that language here, we will then reinstitute that practice as a part of our daily operations, but that is what we are told to expect. Most recently, I met with Bosie's, our Bosie superintendent. I asked him point blank, blank, we expect language from the governor on what exactly it is we have to operate under because we have very short time planned. And his understanding is that the Bosie superintendents would be meeting Tuesday or Wednesday next week, and they were told that they would be after things were out in writing. So I expect Monday and Tuesday to be busy next week. On the heels of that, you may also be aware of her announcements related to school staff. So all school staff will be mandated to be vaccinated or tested weekly. The testing protocols, I can tell you, I do know that they plan to use the cheek swab pool testing in schools this year. Last year, they've used a rapid test nasal swab, a shell nasal swab. So it's a different process this year than last year. We have yet to be told if it's something that school staff are going to be required to do internally, or if it's something that our school staff are going to have to go to an external site to have done. But we do, we do plan on having to show proof of vaccination for all staff regardless of your duties for the school district. And or weekly testing as part of that process. We've been given again, no details on exactly what they expect, so I can't provide much more information than that's what we should be prepared to to do in the coming weeks. On a positive side with some of that, the county has announced that they've changed their quarantine procedures for this coming school year. Last year, our biggest problem keeping schools open was that the quarantine practices from the county were very restrictive. What they have told us is that any student in a classroom that is around a known positive case and his mask will be exempt from quarantine. Any adult that is in a classroom with a positive case and fully vaccinated will be exempt from quarantine. So those are positives for the school. They can be positives for a family. It will lead to less disruption, hopefully. Again, I can't control the county and what they do. They may change their quarantine practices. They did do that throughout last year, a little bit depending on what the county cases look like. They would become a little bit more relaxed, a little bit more strict, but they were still overall very restrictive and tough to keep staff in school. So that is, that is good news for the school district. At least one other thing to note about quarantines is that there is no longer any state or federal exemption from using sick time for quarantine. So if a staff member is quarantined, they are responsible to utilize their own sick time. There's no more kind of green light where they get the paid time off because of the quarantine. Last year, any staff member quarantined had PTO. This year, it's not the case. So that for a staff member, that should also be another deterrent to wanting to make sure that they can keep themselves out of that situation.
Just can I just interrupt for a second? If the governor's mandate comes down, then really that should be moved. They'll be masked. So when every quarantine, correct?
No, the county is not allowing adults that are masked to be exempt from quarantine. They're allowing adults that are fully vaccinated to be exempt from quarantine.
Thank you for that question.
Yes, students, doesn't matter what age they are, whether they're vaccine eligible or not, as long as they're masked, they're exempt from quarantine.
Okay.
And again, that could change. I know that local superintendents would like to see the mask provision applied to adults as well as students. But that's to be seen. I have not had a, I met with the county executive last a week and a half ago now, so I haven't had an update since then.
But that was our biggest challenge last year was if you have two kids are twenty, right, if you have two kids are twenty in a classroom, the classroom still operates. If you don't have a teacher or you don't have bus drivers, we can't keep going. So that's why it's important for the community to understand that piece of it.
Transportation is looking good. First student continues to hire on a daily basis. We feel pretty confident about the opening of school. How all that relates to the opening restrictions or opening requirements, all students, regardless of anything else, will need to be masked on school transportation for any purpose before school programs, after school programs, athletics, to and from school, school transportation is still considered part of the federal requirement to mask on public transit. School buses fall into that requirement. So students will be masked on buses if they need to use that transportation. The good news is for on the masking front is you still have the, you still have the ability to go outside. Students are allowed to be unmasked outdoors. There's no distancing requirement related to that. There is no distancing requirements other than a recommendation to maintain three feet of distance, which is what we ended with last year, which is good. There's also no distancing requirements while eating or drinking, so cafeterias can operate a little bit at a normal function. Aside from the requirement to have everybody masked again, school should by and large be more normal. Athletics is something that's still debated. If you pay attention, we have districts around us that are canceling their high-risk athletics. The there again, there's no requirements for high-risk athletics, but what they are recommending is a vaccination for all athletes participating in a high-risk sport and or weekly testing for those students as well. Right now, we have not really had that conversation in detail. I will tell you that if we're required, we'll have to go that route. Right now, the only high-risk sport that we run for, we run too high-risk athletics for the fall season. It's football and cheering. Some schools run volleyball in the fall. We do not. So we're fortunate to dodge that for now. There's also some debate with the New York State Public High School Athletic Association about updating what is considered a high-risk athletic event in the state of New York. So if you look nationally, some of the national organizations have updated their listing of what sports would qualify for high risk and what do not. New York has not really done any changes to that. Unfortunately for all of us, we're all the byproducts of a late transition in state government. It's probably, you know, next week would have been worse than this week, but there's not a whole lot of time for some of these agencies to get together and make these decisions. So as far as what school looks like for everybody, that's pretty much where we stand as of today. We have a brief video going out tomorrow to the community that pretty much just mentions all that in a nutshell. We'll do some more mass communications Monday, Tuesday, when we start getting things in writing, so people can see those. A brief, brief update on Staley board. I had a walkthrough this afternoon to see the current condition. We've had crews in there twenty-four seven since last Thursday. Building looks pretty good all in all. If you've never been in the building before, you wouldn't know that it's pretty much almost back to where it would have been anyways at this time of year. There's some issues to discuss with the board and executive session tonight related to that building, particularly Rob and I had about an hour-long phone call today with state education department and our architects and construction managers about processes to move forward to make sure that that does not happen again in the building and what that looks like for the state aidability, the finances and the taxpayers of the community, making sure that we're not pumping money into something that's going to continually flood, have to be shut down for a period of time, reopen up and have that that rat race. So we've got some, we've got some information that we'll have to share with you all. We will be making an announcement probably Monday or Tuesday of next week on what we're going to be doing for the first couple of days of school with the staff who are supposed to come back next Wednesday. We know the building will be ready Wednesday for the staff to enter, and that may impact the opening of school for students, but we're just not quite there to be able to talk about it publicly. All in all, though, the building is moving forward well. A tremendous amount of praise and thank you to Alex Rodriguez, Mark Uzak, Rich Randall, all of our maintenance team. We've had maintenance workers on twenty-four seven since last Thursday, property restoration, who's been in there doing the cleanup for that work. Dixon Environmental has been doing all of the biological sampling and testing of the air quality and providing the prescriptions on what to do next to make sure that the building is as clean as possible. So thank you to the whole team of people that have been working on that. We really appreciate that. I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now to the public comment portion. If anybody else that hasn't put out a card would like to speak, please, so we're not. But at this point in the meeting, it's open for public comments. If you wish to speak and have not already done so, please, they comment, Karen, Mrs. Brown. This is an opportunity to appear before the school board and express your views concerning agenda items and just compare. We have to you limit your remarks to five minutes. All public speakers are asked to refrain from making personal attacks or district employees and elected officials. The advice of your comments do not enjoy the same privilege and immunity as statements made by members of the Rome Board of Education, that the mandatory or obscene statements are prohibited. Please note that unless specifically indicated on the agenda, this time is not a question and answer period. There is no exchange of conversation with the members of the board or executive staff. However, if your comments require your response, every effort will be made to respond to your inquiry. It's unreasonable time. Thank you. And our first speaker is Renee Pasquali.
So my name's Renee Pasquali, I'm an eleven, six, and then three, six, five in school, you know, ranging from eleventh grade down to kindergarten. And I love the Rose's way. I've had nothing but positive experiences with school. I've substitute taught a little bit, so I'm just coming from a place of just admiration of school. And I realize that there's mask mandate happening, but I just wanted to like share a little bit about what how it's affecting my which there's so many different like avenues and different, different things you could say about masks that they work, they don't work and all that. But basically, my, I specifically like to talk about my third grader and my kindergarten. They both need speech therapy. And it's, it's very challenging. They have their mask on all day and they don't see the pronunciation and they don't see the facial expressions. And they're, they're young, especially my one going into kindergarten. He just went through, you know, a very strange year of pre-K. And a lot of times he'd tell me he just didn't want to talk because it was too hard because no one could understand him with a mask on. And it's even a little bit harder to understand them without it too, unless you really get to know like the way that says things. And so and another point about the pre-K is it was really hard every day that I pick him up and I take him in the car and I tell him, okay, you can take your mask off now. And it would always be soaking wet every single day. There's not one day that it wasn't. And I just, it just made me really sad for him. I can't imagine how uncomfortable that is, and I certainly can't imagine that that's hygienic at all. These are just the things that I've just noticed along the way. My older kids can handle it better. Nobody likes it, of course, but really the younger ones, I'm just, I'm just discouraged because a lot of schooling, I want them to improve with their pronunciation and their socialization and all that. And I don't see any change, even though they are going to speech therapists. It's just these little sections of time where they get to like talk and learn and take their mask off, and then they go back to the classroom where they're like, well, I might as well just not try because it's hard, which totally understand. And I obviously know that the goal is to have a hundred percent in-person learning, and I agree with that completely. But I don't know if there's any way to ever make it be a parent choice, parental choice, but I really advocate for that if there's any chance of it at all. Because, you know, without the socialization and without me seeing them improve, I don't know that I'd want to keep them. And I hate to say it, I love, I love our schools. It would really make me consider homeschooling. And I just, I just hope you hear my, my heart on the matter. And I think you heard.
Thank you, Renee. Not one of us up here that probably disagrees with you, but you know, I think our hands are tied. So, thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Babes.
Yep, my questions were pretty much answered listening to the board. My decision's pretty much been made with the forcing of the mask and the parents not having any right to decide for their child. So I'm going to be homeschooling this year. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else would like to speak?
I've got a question. When does this stop?
Yeah, first of all.
This whole thing started with one person. We're never going to get rid of this. We're never going to get rid of this.
It's affecting the kids.
This is, this is life. It's never going to go away. We're going to mask forever?
We're all on the same boat.
I know. I know you can't answer that, but, I mean, Jesus.
It's a very frustrating situation we're in, you know, and our hands are tied. We're going to do the best we can for the entire population.
I know.
But thank you. I definitely appreciate your comments. Okay, well, that I.
Since there's been over six hundred thousand adverse reactions, whatever, down to probably about ten thousand being deaths from your vaccines are, you know, how are you going to tell your teachers that they're going to sit here and have to take this vaccination? Now, me, I work in healthcare, so I've seen and I've been on and I've dealt with it. I'm fine. Haven't been sick at all. You know, I'm good. And you know what? This is a virus. It's going to sit here and take toll. But how are you going to tell your teachers that they have to get a vaccine? Do you know that it's not after you approved, really? And do you, if it is, well, actually it is, but do you have the coraminity vaccine approval to give your teachers? Because I work in healthcare and right now my job is on the line because I'm about to quit. Well, actually not quit, actually just walk out with a lot of others because we are being forced. And I've worked since, actually, I'm twenty years in, so I know I've seen a lot of, a lot of stuff. But and I work in healthcare and we will all probably sit here and walk out, but I'm not having my child take a vaccine, wear a mask. Maybe this, this is insane for anyone. So you can tell me who I have to go or speak to to get this to sit here and stop. My teachers have come to me also asking me, what do they do? How do they sit here and fight? I'm ready to sit here and fight because I don't like to sit on the sideline anymore. So what do I have to sit here and do to make this? Do I have to do to the state educational board or what?
It's the governor's office. It's not even state education.
That's where we gotta go. That's what, if not, it's homeschooling.
It's homeschooling.
They push a vaccine. It doesn't, it doesn't stop you from getting the virus. It doesn't stop you from transmitting the virus.
Even if you're vaccinated.
Yeah, even, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't barely do anything, especially with this Delta variant. I don't understand how we can push for vaccines. It, it does nothing that they tell us that it's a false sense of security. Get the vaccine. Okay. Will I still have to wear a mask? Yeah. Can I still get it? Yeah. Can I still give it to somebody? Yeah. It makes no sense.
I mean, you gotta look.
Way above, way above us.
Right.
Our ultimate goal is to get as many kids back in school as possible.
I understand that, but isn't, isn't your goal also to listen to the parents that come to these meetings?
Absolutely. But so much of what we do here at this table, it falls on what state education dictates to us. And right now, as, as Mr. Blake said, it's the governor's office. So.
This will be state law, not state education department.
Law?
So we, if the governor comes out and requires us, if she issues a requirement.
Do you believe that?
So she can pass, whatever we worked under all last year, she can make an edict that we're required to do this.
A law?
You can say that you can't. Not a law for the state. I apologize. She can mandate schools to follow certain requirements. She absolutely can. Now, legislature is also involved. They can stop that, I hope. I don't know.
I hope.
That's not our responsibility. All I have to do is make sure that our district is following the rules that were sent by both the education department, in this case, the legislature.
Is this, we're masking stuff for all of our kids here? There's a lot more parents should be here, you know. Talking about here, I know. I have a question though. If there's a, what's the next meeting? When you guys said, this is the first time.
September ninth. They're the second and fourth.
Because I had no idea. My buddy said, hey, they're doing what's nice.
They're on the district calendar. You should have just gotten in the mail, and we try to meet the second and fourth Thursday of every month, unless there's a holiday, and then we. Second and fourth Thursday.
So if we had like a hundred to a thousand people show up one day, where are we going? Nowhere. I'm just having a question. Does this room fit in them? Or where do we go? Dumb hallways?
We would, we would move the meeting to a larger room.
Larger room? Okay. For the kids wearing masks, like, is that something with child abuse? And all your names are on it right now? I'm just wondering, because if my attorney gets involved, what's going to happen with that? Just a question. Trying to figure it out.
You do understand.
I believe that's a child.
Manded by the governor.
Child making that decision.
No, no, no. I'm just here for answers. Six hours of school. Kids gotta have a mask on. It's not child abuse. I just want to hear yes or no. I mean, you guys have kids probably. What do you think?
I have a daughter. I don't think it's child abuse.
You don't think it's child abuse? Really? I don't either.
My daughter's fourteen.
My, my son works in food service. He wears a mask every day when he goes to work. He's seventeen. My daughter works front-facing. She wears a mask. She's twenty-one. I have had to, our workplace is mandated to return to mask as of August second. So I've been wearing a mask every day to work since August second.
Comply, comply, comply. That's all I'm hearing.
But we're talking about adults.
You guys, I have, I have three kids in the district. I have an eleven. I have a four who's autistic, non-verbal, does not talk. And then I have a three going into the three-year-old program. They all have to wear a mask just, and I tell them you have to wear a mask just because I want all the kids to be back in school. Right. I want them to be.
The masks. How, how do you feel about that?
He is it.
That's really.
He's, he's not super, super loving it.
Right.
But with understanding in the classroom with the teachers, if he takes it off, then he just puts it back on. It's not like a constant beating them down all day. And I'm actually working in an educational area too. So I have a classroom. So I do feel like I tell kids all day long, pull up your mask, put your mask back on. But there comes a point where you just need to give a kid a break or things like that, and all the teachers understand. Now, my child that's four, it hurts me more than anything for him to go back being non-verbal. He cannot talk. He can't see his therapist talking to him. He has definitely scaled back on the things that he's learned. He needs more therapies, and I'm paying out of pocket for those therapies, but we can't control that. So I want my kids back in school.
But we can control.
How to deal with your kids? Not, it doesn't work for mine. It doesn't work for hers or hers. That's it. That's how they're telling us for us to treat and for you to treat our children. It doesn't work. They're just telling you how to raise.
We're not going to disagree with that. No one here is disagreeing that parents should have the ability to have that conversation.
But we do.
We can't provide that.
You guys, the teachers aren't there to be like your enemy. The teachers love your kids. That's why they're there. They're not going to make your kid feel uncomfortable. I promise you that. Our kids are, our teachers are amazing.
We observed it. We did pride talks this year at all the buildings. Every member, I believe, had an opportunity. We, well, I'm not going to debate. We're not going to, none of us are epidemiologists here. We're not going to debate the medical piece of that.
If I bring a doctor in to discuss this, maybe next year.
So I, I just, I'd like to make my statement here, which is this. We toured all of the schools between April and May from pre-K all the way through the high school. We did not see any of the kids having an issue. We had a group of kindergarteners sing to us with their masks on. They made us the painting that's on the wall. We went by high school classrooms. We went by, you know, we, we probably have to work the hardest in our, our supportive learning classrooms. But the kids want to be in school, and this is what we're being told has to be done to do that. So that's our focus. We understand your frustration. It breaks our heart. We have to make tons of decisions when COVID isn't happening that are not the easiest thing to share with the public, but they're the necessary thing because of the restrictions we are under to receive state funding to have public education. So that's where we are right now. It doesn't mean we love it. It doesn't mean that just because we've all come to a consensus here that we're going to do whatever it takes to open the doors this year that we're gung ho about it. It means if it's the difference between getting kids in school and do ever, doing everything it takes to have them there, that's our goal.
And I, I get, I respect your, your point of view. I really do. But how come we're not having a decision based on the parents saying, I don't want my kids to go to school, school this, or whenever this whole mask mandate is up? How come there's not an option for them to be taught at home? How come we're not doing that this year?
The state education department provision that allowed for that last year expired. They did not re-up the option for remote learning as a primary method of instruction.
So the only option right now is to homeschool your child.
If you have a medical, there's still the leak, there's a federal statute, the five oh four mandate, which allows students to be taught outside of the school setting for medical reasons or have accommodations made, I should say, for a educational purpose. In this situation, if there's a medical reason that a doctor substantiates and is a legitimate medical reason, your student could be provided remote instruction through the five oh four process.
Okay, or you could just completely go off by yourself and homeschool your child.
You can file for homeschooling. There's state requirements that are required that have to go through all.
Okay, yes, yeah, okay.
And how about Staley? You guys get rid of that school?
As Asia mentioned earlier tonight, we're not ready to discuss that yet.
That's kind of crazy. I mean, that, that place has been flooding for years. I went there.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Don't you think there's black mold and asbestos in that building?
The building has been certified asbestos-free many years ago.
Really?
Yeah. And there's no, there's no black mold that I'm aware of.
No black that you're aware of. That makes it safe. You're saying. Yeah, the mask will take care of it.
Okay, we're going to go on. Thank, thank you for your comments.
Pretty frustrating too, when people are making comments and people on the board have smirks.
Yeah.
Make faces, shake their head because they don't agree with what some of us are saying.
Well, I don't know who's doing it, but.
Would you like me to tell you who they are?
We're, we're all just like.
Because I'll point them out to you.
We're all just like you. I mean, we're, we're all on the same boat, just because we're up here. I mean, we're any different than you folks.
You guys are telling us different because you have to.
We have to, yes.
Tell us.
And we understand that here.
We probably tell you something different.
Instead of just saying, okay.
That's it.
We don't want to fight.
Somebody to help you. You guys are here. You, you aren't just supposed to be the middle.
What he's trying to say is, is should it not come down to the governor? If it's put on the school district, would the school district, the board be willing to?
Right. You get enough. Instead of just saying, okay, that's what we're going to do.
I guess what they're trying, what he's trying to say.
I think the difficulty is that for every voice there is that says, I don't want my child to wear a mask, there's a voice that says I do. And, and that's the difficulty. But if your child is not wearing a mask and your child is sick.
They're, they're protected with the mask on, though.
Yeah.
Basically, I mean, they've, they've showed very simple drawings of this. One person with a mask is a certain degree. Two people with a mask is another degree. I, I did this with a child recently. Put a mask on, breathe on your mirror, see if it fogs up. Put the mask on, see if, if you breathe on your mirror, if it does. It, it does protect to a small degree, or it gives some people a feeling of comfort. And it's so much easier to say if, if we're going to do it, we're going to try to not single kids out and let everyone be doing the same thing. It's not my favorite thing. I'm hoping that if we mask for September and October, that maybe we're going to get better numbers instead of worse like we did last winter. That's what the county executive said today. His hope is that instead of watching the numbers continue to go up, that they will continue to go down. We're back at a hundred cases a day again. It's not great. It's awful. It's awful. We all have lost sleep at night over this. We've talked to our own kids. We've talked to each other. We relentlessly bother Peter. But we have to do the ultimate job of opening the doors. So our focus right now is, will the teachers be equipped with what they need? Can we fit all the desks in the classroom three feet apart? Do we have all the items on this agenda? Enough staff to open the doors? Do we have all the hand sanitizing and? Do we have all the hand sanitizing and hand washing things? That's what we're focused, we're focused on what we can do. Because that's something, as Mr. Blake has said, the governor has said, we don't have a voice on that.
Um, I just have, I guess something to say, that there's obviously a lot of really strong opinions in this room, and I think we all understand what you guys are saying, and that it's coming from the governor's office, but I mean, if there is an opportunity for you guys to say what you're hearing, I think that's really important, so instead of just saying, well, this is what we're being told, that we have to move forward on that, I also think it's part of what you guys do, that I've given the opportunity to explain to them, and whoever you have the opportunity to speak to, that, hey, this is what we're hearing from parents. That guess what? These are the people that showed up to explain how we feel as parents when we've got kindergarteners going in with half their face covered up. I mean, that's, I.
It bothers me when you guys say, there's nothing we can do. That, that, that bothers.
It bothers us to sit at the side of the table and know that, because when you run for the board, you're gung ho, and you're like, I'm gonna make such a big difference. Did you and I just talk about this?
From the last meetings, or these meetings?
They're all online.
Those conversations, I've spoken at length with the mayor and our elected officials in Albany about our community's feelings on masks. I'm gonna assure you that I've had that conversation.
Yes, they're, I, Katie, they're all online, correct? They're all online under, under district and under board of education on the website.
So if our kids show up, say a hundred kids show up, no mask, what, what do you, what's the teacher's gonna do there? Who's gonna stop them from not wearing a mask?
It's gonna be a not fun conversation, right? They're gonna be asked to put the mask on, I'm not gonna be kicking kids out of school. But we're gonna have to make some phone calls.
Phone calls to.
The parents and remind them that this is what is required.
Call me, it's gonna be a whole different ballgame, so what, what are you guys gonna do?
You're gonna have to have that conversation with the principal, sir.
The principal, what's the principal gonna tell me?
Probably remind you the students the next day should please wear.
One ear off the other, then what happens?
You know what's gonna happen. We're gonna have to put in a place where we're gonna have to enforce whatever rules are sent down to us. And if the requirements aren't for the kids to wear masks, we're gonna have to go to the unfortunate length of doing student disciplines through court of conduct.
I wanna, I'd like to see that written.
If it's a requirement from the state.
You're gonna, you're gonna suspend my second grader?
Uh, maybe after many months of back and forth, possibly, that might be what it comes to. Is it gonna come to that? I don't think it's gonna come to that.
Many months of what?
Of defiance.
Um, do you understand that people are getting suspended, employees are getting suspended in different workplaces for not wearing their masks? I don't agree with it either. We don't have a choice. Okay, so say we, say we did do something, now, are you gonna step up and give us more money? Because the state is not.
What, what's gonna happen to your funding then? What's gonna happen to Rome?
Well, you know what, I know a lot of people are saying that, but we'll see how many people actually do, well, we'll see. I think the irony of that is, there's the same parents who were complaining that we had to open school because you need to go to work. So, it's very frustrating for us that last year you were like, please open the doors, no matter what the cost. And this year you're like, please open the doors, but oh no, don't make us do that.
None of us here are saying that.
The conversation prior to the governor coming down was us considering offering a choice. And now that the governor has superseded that, that is the direction we're headed.
The board is willing to be our voice, if she doesn't turn around and say, no, this is the mandate, this is it across the board, if they leave it up to the school district. I'm asking, we're asking you, will you be our voice?
I, I don't know that we're in a position to be able to do that. I don't know that we even have that power.
Position to be my voice, as my school board.
All we can do is.
I mean, and it's a simple, it's a simple, I, I, I'm not is, is angry, I don't think, cause I spoke last meeting, and we went through this, and you, everything was great, you guys heard me, it was receptive, everything was good. But now it seems like, now you're saying, no, we're not willing to be your voice. If, if it's put on the board, and there is choice for the school. Are you going to, it's a yes or no?
Because there are nine board members, and we all have to vote on it. Okay, so ha- five of them might be yes, so yes, then the other four that don't agree with it, we all agree that we will be one group. And we will stand behind the other board members, so if five say yes and four say no, you have the board's support.
So you would have the majority, and then the board would go with the majority, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's, people don't know that, we have no idea, and that's what we're trying to figure out. If the board votes on it, if it's left up to the board, you will be our voice, the majority of the board will be our voice.
It's our job to try to be your voice.
Okay.
And our, but our voice also includes six thousand students' families. Okay, and it includes all of the public entities that we answer to. So it's not a simple yes or no, because we have to factor in so many other things when we make that choice. And right now, the choice has been taken out of our hands. It's the most frustrating thing ever. It is.
How many people have been to these meetings in support of masks? How many parents?
Can, I'm gonna say something really out of line here, but I'm gonna say it anyway. How many parents show up at any other meeting to have an understanding of what's happening in this district? There were what, four or five of you here at the last meeting, I think?
You're right, it's atrocious since there isn't more people here.
Wait, but I heard you just said back here that they just literally received the letter of today's meeting today in the mail.
No, I said, I said the district calendar came in the mail today. The district calendar came in the mail, someone asked where they can find the information.
I've never gotten one, I researched it on my own book project, so, but I've never gotten anything.
You don't get the district calendar? Do you have a student in school?
I was gonna have one in kindergarten.
Oh, it, it, it's all the parents that are in school tools, you get a district calendar, so it, it picks up from school tools.
So once there.
But it is online, you can go to the Rome City. If, if it was just released, just fine.
Say, hey, this date such and such, like, get it out there, brand of social networking.
Should be Rome C S D N Y.
Man, if you don't wanna hear from the people you're supposed to represent, then why, why are you here?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
And I have not.
Okay, we, we gotta. This situation here, I'm sorry, you know, we were having a good conversation, but now it's getting a little unruly, and you know. We're, we're born and willing to, to.
Can I, can I please respond though, to that, John, I'm sorry. I do wanna be here, I ran for this, for this board for a reason. What's frustrating me is that regardless of what we say. It, it doesn't matter, you guys want somebody's head for this, and we are not responsible for it. And you are all reasonable people, and you know, I know you understand that, but you're angry. And based on what you think and what you believe, you have every right to be angry, but you, you can't get blood from me. I, I'm apolog- I am apolog- apologizing if I appear to be like I don't care, I care more than you know, sir, I care so much. But you know that this is not our fault, whoa, but you're angry, and I get it, and I'm not saying you don't have a right to be. But you're coming at us like we can change it. If something should happen, and they say, okay, it's back to you. Based on the vote of this board, if it votes in your favor for what you guys would like to happen, you got us.
Okay.
That's why I ask how many parents have been to these in favor of masks?
We, we get daily updates from the New York State School Board Association, there are seven hundred school districts in New York State. This is the dialogue in every district in this state right now. There are sheriffs at some meetings, they have closed some meetings to the public completely, I mean, it is a contentious issue. And since COVID began, it is like a fifty-one forty-nine split constantly. And for every parent who's terrified and wants to keep their kid in a bubble, there's another kid who says exactly what you did, Mrs. Pasqualetti, my child needs this. And both sides of that are valid, we're all parent, most, we're all, I think, we're all parents up here. Except for Alana, our poor student number, who is probably ready to quit the board right now, poor honey. But we get it, we get that this feels impossible. My son is, I graduated a kid in twenty twenty, and I have another senior this year, you think I am loving watching my boys live this brand of hell? I'm not. Do you think I'm loving seeing kindergartners, their first school experience is this? We're not, we're not. But you want us to give you a definitive answer on something that, as Elena just said, is not our answer to give you right now. We will always be here to do what's in your best interest, but sometimes it's not gonna be the thing you like. We had a board training a couple of weeks ago, and the superintendent that gave the training said, listen. Your responsibility, you, you are required to provide a free and fair education. You are responsible for doing that as safely as possible. There's not a one hundred percent, here's the magic wand, as John said, magic eight ball answer on how to do that. So we are taking every piece of information we got in an ever-changing game, day by day. So Jeff, to your question, you say to me, what do I do right now? I can't answer you right now, because today there's a hundred new cases. And I work part-time for Rome Health, and I know the numbers are going up in the hospital, so today, my feeling is different than it was a month ago. When Mr. Pessanti said in his, his presentation today, there were zero hospitalizations, one month ago today.
I think Ms. Reddick, I think she said, that I'm saying that right, I think what she said is exactly what we kinda needed to hear. For me personally, that was what I needed.
Please trust that we will always have a lengthy discussion, we don't ever make a, a decision in a vacuum. We make it based on all the information we have at the moment the decision needs to be made. This week, the twenty-fourth at midnight, when a new governor came into place, the decision was taken off the school boards and put back to the state level. It's where we are today. As that changes, we will revisit, and I promise you, no one keeps us more informed than Mr. Blake. He, every time something changes, he sends us an email, and we know what's happening. It doesn't make our decisions any easier most of the time, but at least he gives us the information to try to process before we sit at this table.
So this is my first meeting, so you guys go back to Albany and say, hey, parents are here, they're discussing this back and forth, you guys like, tell them what we said.
I share with our elected officials what our. Uh, I will share with our elected officials again, they are, you know, I, I, you might have been, there was a couple of conversations happening, but I think I was responding to her comment about where does this go? I've already made our mayor very well informed of how our community feels, and what we would prefer to do as an organization for our community. I've spoken with our elected officials in Albany, I don't know what influence, if any, the legislature has right now in the new governor. I, I, I don't, I could have told you before, when Cuomo was the governor, what Griffo and Button Sean could do to help, because they had established relationships, I don't know what Senator Griffo and Senator William Button Sean's uh, relationships are with the new governor. But I can assure you, as a superintendent, I am sharing our district's perspectives, our community's needs with our elected officials and our regional voces. Not that our voces really has anything, they've got no authority, but their superintendent can take the conversation to state education department and say here's what our community, here's what one of our districts is saying, uh, their, their concerns and their needs are.
So how many more parents gotta come here and, like, voice for their kids for some changes?
It's not here you gotta come to, sir, you'd have to go to Albany, you have to go to those elected officials. If I could change the rules, if I could change the rules. No, you're voicing, you're voicing your concern.
So what did I say? Now you guys are helping our kids out.
Just because we're not doing the exact thing you want, doesn't mean we don't help kids. And we've heard you, we've heard you try.
We understand, and I allowed this back and forth, because I thought it's an important topic to do, and I thank you all for your comments. And we'll do what we can.
Because we do a lot, we have meetings all the time.
You don't know the hours that we put.
I don't wanna hear that, does the work field, work field that I do, you have no idea?
We have jobs too.
I know.
No, I understand.
A little bit different. Okay, we're going on.
No, we don't.
Forty-five minutes?
Yeah, you think that, okay, we're not gonna. Thank you.
Resolution to accept the consent agenda. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of school, the consent agenda be accepted by the board of education, I so moved the resolution. Sent by Mrs. Davis, any discussion? On favor? Case six, finance, section item number one. Resolution to confirm, confirm school tax for all initiates a warrant for collection. Whereas in accordance with section thirteen oh six, as amended of the education law of state of New York. This board of education has cause to be prepared to school tax roll based upon the assessment rolls of the city of Rome and the towns of Lee, Anzville, Western, and Verona. Protect to be levied as stated in the city, Rome city school district budget for fiscal period July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two inclusive. Now therefore be resolved, if the school tax roll so prepared by the same hereby is in all respects confirmed and delivery of said school tax roll. Together with this board's warrant for the collection of such tax annex thereto is hereby authorized and directed, and be it further resolved. At the rate of interest payable on school taxes remaining unpaid shall be the rate of interest on unpaid city taxes in the city of Rome, New York. Then we have the, the warrant underneath. Uh, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but the total sum to be collected is thirty-five million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Oh no, okay. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, it was thirty-six million four hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Then we start action one. This warrant is issued by authority of the real property law, and as effect of immediately time, it's executed by majority of the members of the board of education, I so moved that resolution.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowie, any discussion?
This is a reminder for the record, uh, the tax warrant for the year is a half a percent lower than the voter approved tax increase in May. So the board is electing to reduce the tax increase by a half a percent over what the board approved.
So, Peter, that was one point four nine, or one point four?
And the amount was, the budget that the board approved was one point nine. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye. Item, it's an item two, resolution to approve universal pre-K contract. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, UPK three-year-old service contract from the Rome Catholic preschool. Fifteen hundred dollars per child be approved by the board of education for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty school year, so move the resolution.
Second.
Second, by Ms. McGurk, any discussion on that? On favor? Close motion here. Action item three. Resolution to approve universal pre-K contract. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the UPK four-year-old service contract from Rome Catholic preschool, fifteen hundred hours per child, be approved by the board of education for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, so move the resolution.
Second.
Signed by Ms. McGurk, any discussion? On favor? Uh, nothing to report on the finance committee, uh, we haven't met since the last report, and our next meeting is Tuesday, September seventh at ten AM in this room. Facilities.
You all received the email from me on the status of the facilities and, and what I was thinking about in terms of some upcoming activities, and I mentioned in there that although we, we're getting a lot of facilities information at that time, on both the work being done at RFA, and some plans from Staley. I thought that the thing we should concentrate on is going forward is the opening of schools, while that obviously is kind of played out with the flood and everything. So that is our major focus of, of consideration, i.e. the seven elementary schools and their status. Start district, and, and I think we're gonna be. District and, and I think we're going to be hearing a lot about that as a board of the whole. So I don't. I don't feel comfortable asking somebody to come to a facilities meeting right now for topics that we're all interested in. And we're going to be seeing down the road. So we should be getting. A status report on, on all of those schools, but in particular on the status of Staley going forward since that's our largest. Elementary school. And that'll be a, that'll be a real hinge. The other thing that we're going to continue to follow closely is the. Work on, on the redistricting, which has to do with our upcoming population numbers, which we also don't. You know, we'll be seeing some final numbers there. And a lot of that will tie into the, the new busing program. So I think, I think there'll be a lot of things having to do with the opening of school that are going to be coming. Going to the board and I don't think we need to do that as a, as a special, you know, side meeting. Because the people involved like Alex Gresnius and that will be coming to the meeting and then. Board. So for the time being, I would say we hold facilities and advance and work with. Areas of interest, i.e. like what's going on at Staley. You all have some, probably have some thoughts on that.
So are you proposing to just have a committee of the whole, like at six thirty or our meetings at seven or five thirty if it's at six?
I'm proposing not to have any separate facility meetings right now, but to concentrate on the areas. Uh, of, of interest to the board.
Right. So, so you want help some of these meetings.
Well, I, I want, I want the board to hear. In terms of what's going on relative to the status of the elementary schools. The, the busing situation, the. The, whatever we learn from the rezoning in terms of. Of the attendance in the different, we haven't heard any of that in the district yet.
Not ready to present. And when, when Ross is ready to present to the board, he's going to do that. His target date for his first, uh, update, I believe he said was January.
Yeah, but see, I think the, uh, I think the, the board as a whole should be interested in some of the details of how. The registration, what, what, what are the, and I'm sure we're going to see this, see the populations of, of, of the different, uh, elementary buildings. And, uh, and we'll be talking about. Whatever we have to do to accommodate the busing to, to satisfy those requirements. Now, I don't know this for a fact, but are, are any of our. Over any of our elementary, uh, buildings experiencing a. Large gain or loss in population that we're seeing based on registrations.
No kindergarten registrations down a little bit again this year, but there's no tremendous drop off anywhere. They still, still, still hold steady in the three fiftieth range. Your, your big grade levels right now are still two, three, four. You're pushing about four fifty to five seventy-five in those three grade levels. Uh, but all the others, you're three fifty to four hundred. Ninth grade was larger than, than normal last year, yes. And eighth grade is a little bit, is slightly elevated from normal to about four fifty-ish. So eight and nine.
So I think Stroud and the RFA situation, even though we have a lot of activity going on in, in, well, in, in, at the RFA building. It's still a single building with a single population. You don't have the variables associated with the seven elementary school. So it's, it, it would be reassuring to know that, that the populations of those buildings are going to be the same. And then if we have to make any compromises relative to your whole. Staley. In any way, how would we do that? You know, how would that be, how would that be addressed? And that'll be something that'll be forthcoming, I'm sure, from the district over the next week as they. Learn what the situation at Staley is in terms of any compromise that can be made.
Sorry, we will be, yeah, well, as soon as we have information on what we're going to do, we're going to release that first to the board. I would expect that maybe Sunday night. Coming to the board, maybe Monday morning and then publicly following the board's understanding of what will it need to have in Staley. The immediate concern right now for Staley is being able to get the building ready for staff to get in to set up the rooms for kids.
So if we could accommodate as many kids as, I'm assuming that we're going to, we're talking about the same number of students at Staley this year as we've had in the last few years.
Correct.
In the neighborhood of five hundred students. So we pretty much need the total Staley facility to do that. So. If, if there's any compromises that have to be made relative to compensating for the. The flood, for instance, if we have to lose a few classrooms and we're going to have to worry about how we do that, correct?
Correct. We'll know more information sometime next week.
So those are the kind of topics that I would address in a facilities meeting in terms of, you know. Asking some questions as well as all of the work that's going on at RFA right now, but I don't think it's appropriate right now to do that. Because we're, we're, we're pulling the people that are involved in all of this activity away from their jobs. That's my, that's my suggestion that we hold off on having a formal meeting and agenda because we're going to be addressing these things as a board of the whole.
Well, I want to interject if, if I mentioned this later on in this line is, but if we take the idea that I had of getting a board calendar. Where, I think I sent, I guess, everybody to send it information, which is like, I know I compiled some. So if we have a can, like at this meeting, we'd like this information, if this meeting would like this information, monthly attendance, but we could interject what you're saying, would you like to see? In certain months and times and this information comes, we could say, okay, this month would be the month that Ross, he wants to speak. So we kind of have it planned out for the year. What we'd like to see quarterly semi annual and stuff. I think that might solve what you're saying, it would still get the information out.
We have that planned internally. Our, the, the administrators know what meetings they're required to come present, whatever topics it is that they have to present.
So just get it formalized. So we have as a board, know what, we want to ask Peter to make sure he, he shares the thoughts.
Right. That is helpful. That is definitely helpful because sometimes things come at us and I haven't read up, not quite ready. So that would be helpful.
So if you want to work, and I said I was bound to, if you wanted to do an attack committee, that I would be on it if you wanted to be on it too and do it really quick. And then check, share with Peter, you know, like monthly attendance. You say, is your name, like, just ask every month, is there anything to change that, uh, you know, the district, you know, just kind of keep it so we know what. We have in our minds every month, what, you know. You don't forget. It's like time you said, there's so much that comes at us. So just a thought, so it just seemed like it was a good time to talk about it.
Okay.
Yes. And just other facilities, I do want to thank Peter and, um, Alex and Rob again for walking us through Staley. Helping to give us an update and a, a true picture of what's happening there. So thank you for keeping us informed.
Additional programs.
So I'm going to divert to Peter. It's his plan.
We're at table one and two until the end of the meeting when Chris has a chance to present plans, we, we just brush over it by accident.
I, I have, I have been reading this, Chris, and they're.
Just remind me.
That's one, two, and.
There's no, there wasn't a presentation on three tonight, right?
Resolution to reapprove the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three professional learning plan result. That upon the recognition of the superintendent of schools, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three professional learning plan be reapproved by the Board of Education for the twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two school year. I move the resolution.
A second. Any discussion?
Favor?
And our next meeting is Monday, September thirteenth at four thirty.
Thank you, Dr. Fontana. People operations, who would like to?
Action items, uh, actually, I'm sorry, uh, is this where we should move to add these, add this? I move that we add the addendum for people operations, uh, which was attached to your agenda. Be added. As part of tonight's action items.
Mr. Bowie? On favor?
Resolution to recall individual from the preferred eligibility list, resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education hereby recalls the following individual from the preferred eligibility list, Tara Pimento, a reading teacher. Uh, effective September first, twenty twenty-one. I.
Uh, she's already signed it.
Okay, I move the resolution.
Signed by Ms. McGurk. Any discussion? On favor?
Action items, resolution to approve, approve staff transfers. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following staff transfers effective. Uh, September first, Deb Signorelli from Staley Elementary Fifth to AIS. Jennifer Pogelski. Pogelski, thank you. I got good at the Italian ones and now I can't hit the Polish. I'm sorry. Um, from first grade in Bellamy to AIS at Bellamy. Joseph Zotto from fifth grade in Bellamy to AIS at Bellamy. Nicole Iverson, a library media specialist from, uh, Bellamy to RFA. Shelley Zepwigna from special education in Staley to special education at Stroud. Madison DeCarlos, um, from the early child, I'm sorry, from Bellamy to the early childhood program. Paula Sherman, food service helper from Gansvor to Denty and the following is effective August twenty-seventh, Susan Carmen. Uh, from Rome Catholic to Gansvor. I move the resolution.
Again by Ms. Bowie. Any discussions? On favor, say aye.
Resolution to grant tenure, resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby grants the following tenure. Heidi Malloy, English as a New Language, effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And Tammy Fanning, Special Education, effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I move the resolution.
Any discussion? On favor?
And congratulations to these members. Item four, resolution to appoint non-instructional personnel provisional. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following instructional personnel provisional. Deanna Nason, Senior Account clerk at District Office, effective August thirtieth at the salary listed. I move the resolution.
Second by Dr. Fontana. Any discussion? On favor, say aye. Motion, Carrie.
Resolution to appoint instructional person, personnel probationary. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following. Personnel probationary. People are confused that the first item on this one is one that we just approved a transfer for. Oh, because we might have to move to amend it. Madison DeCarlos, teacher assistant, effective nine, one, twenty-one to eight, thirty-one, twenty-five. Eddie Campos at Denty, teacher assistant. Eighteen thousand, six hundred and four from September first, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And Caitlin Sinabria, S. Staley, teacher assistant, September first, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowie. Okay, discussion.
Uh, we just approved her as a TA transfer. I'm not sure why we're.
I, I don't know either. I have to ask, uh, Jeff or Sally. My guess is that she put him to be appointed at Bellamy. And then, uh, was moved at ECP prior to the hire. We're, we're hiring TAs every day. So I'm going to guess that Molly spoke to her at Bellamy initially. She was planning to be for Bellamy.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure we're not duplicating something.
Yeah, I believe so. And I will have Shelley, uh, and Jeff update everyone tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye. You know, motion, Carrie.
Resolution to appoint non-instructional personnel probationary that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following. Non-instructional personnel probationary. Tammy Morgan, teacher aide, Virginia Bucket Monitor. Jessica Schreiner, registered nurse, Alexis Conti, registered nurse, all effective September fourth, twenty twenty-one. With a probationary period ending February twenty, two thousand, twenty, twenty-two. I move the resolution.
Second by Mr. Bowie. Any discussion?
Peter, can you clarify the dates? Is that only? Is that only six-month probationary?
Yes, probationary six-month period.
Okay.
Further discussion? On favor, say aye. Opposed, Carrie.
The difference between those are civil service positions, the TA positions are certified licensed positions like. So TAs are four-year probationary civil services, six months. That's why it's so much shorter.
Thank you. Action item seven, resolution to accept retirement, resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts with regret the retirement of the following individual. Laura Bloom, teacher assistant at Stroud, effective September second, twenty twenty-one. And we all know Joe's question, I move the resolution.
Second by Ms. Freddie. Any discussion?
Is she sure? Is that the right date?
Okay, um, on favor, say aye. Congratulations on your retirement.
Resolution to appoint fall coaching personnel that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following. Fall coaching personnel, Kelly Gordon, assistant varsity football coach, effective August twenty-third, twenty-one to eleven, one of twenty-one. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second by Ms. McGurk. Any discussion?
I just want to advise the public that's with us tonight that we did already previously appoint the rest of the athletic coaches for the season. This is in addition.
On favor, say aye.
Resolution to appoint ball sport, sporting event personnel that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following. Fall sporting event personnel, including site supervisors, ticket supervisors, chain crews, game clock operators. And any roles I might have missed at the salary and dates listed below. I move the resolution.
Second by Mr. Bowie. Need a second?
For contributing to our athletic program.
All in favor, say aye.
Resolution to create non-instructional positions that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby creates the following non-instructional positions. Two custodial workers, district-wide floats. I move the resolution.
Second by Mr. Bowie, or by Mr. Freddie. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, can you clarify this for me from people operations? I thought the idea was to not have floats and to appoint them to a place.
No, all of our custodians are considered floats in case we have to transfer in a moment's notice.
Okay.
If you lock them into a building, then it's a, a thirty-day notification process to move.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
On favor, say aye.
Resolution to create instructional positions, resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education hereby creates the following instructional positions to special education teachers.
This is for the early childhood program.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion?
Peter, I'm sorry, so the, um, determination was that two classrooms is what we can accommodate at this time?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
On favor, say aye.
Onto the addendum, resolution to appoint in non-instructional. No, I'm not doing, okay. I'm on a roll. Wow, people operations is it, man. Okay. Resolution to appoint instructional personnel that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following instructional personnel. Brittany Arnold, elementary at Staley, Emily Elliott, uh, elementary at Denty. Um, Elena Riolo, reading at Staley, Joshua Costello. Elementary at Bellamy, Cooper Claire's Music at Stroud. And Megan Longo, school social worker district-wide. All of these are effective September first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, at steps and salaries as listed. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowie. Any discussion?
Thank you and welcome to the district.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Item thirteen, resolution to abolish positions that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby abolges abolishes the following positions. Nurse coordinator and office manager. I move the resolution. Okay.
Second by Mr. Boy. Any discussion? For this, I know just to refresh, the nurse coordinator, we are not doing this coordinator coordinator, we're gonna have to.
Two of those building nurses are gonna split the duty from within the contract, correct?
And the office manager is an absolute titan.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Item fourteen, resolution to approve agreement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves a disciplinary and last chance agreement. Between the district and a tenured teacher. I move the resolution.
Second by.
He hasn't said anything yet.
Mr. Freddie. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Okay, now we are on to the addendum. Item one, resolution to appoint non-instructional personnel probationary. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following non-instructional personnel probationary. Tammy Islesworth at Joy as a team service helper. Faith Whitmore at Stroud as a one-to-one teacher aide. Monica Francis as a monitor at Stroud. Gail Williamson as a one-to-one teacher aide at Joy. Jennifer Wilkinson as a monitor for the early childhood program. Kelsey, is it Nido?
Nito.
Nieto, a teacher aide, one-to-one in the early childhood program. And Eric Zatko, an in-school suspension supervisor at Rome Free Academy. These are at the salary listed below, effective September first, twenty twenty one through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. I move the resolution. Second.
Second by Ms. McGurran, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Resolution to approve staff transfers. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves the following staff transfers. Selena Tarduno, food service helper from Stroud to RFA. Effective September first, Kelly Friedman from Bellamy co-taught in third grade to Bellamy twelve, one, one, effective September first. And Danielle Hess, assistant principal from RFA to Staley, effective August thirtieth, twenty twenty one. I move the resolution. Second.
Second by Ms. McGurran. Any discussion?
I have a question. I don't think I can ask. Related to the email that was sent, you don't have to consider. We are good with. We got, okay, we're good, okay. Okay, thank you, send me email, answer the question.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Okay. Um.
Few more.
Item three, resolution to appoint non-instructional personnel provisional. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following instructional personnel provisional. Matthew Costello. Building maintenance mechanic, effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty one. And Jessica Wuthrich, homeschool community liaison for early childhood, effective September ninth. At the salaries listed below. I move the resolution. Second.
Second by Ms. McGurran, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Resolution to appoint fall sporting personnel. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoints the following fall sporting event personnel. Guy Colander, site supervisor, effective August thirtieth, twenty twenty one to November first, twenty twenty one. I move the resolution. Second.
Second by Ms. McGurran. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. One extension.
Resolution to appoint instructional personnel. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby appoint the following instructional personnel. Sydney Seersen, elementary at Bellamy. And Sarah Beaton, reading at Joy, effective September first, twenty twenty one through August thirty first, twenty twenty five. At the salaries listed below. I move the resolution.
Second by Mr. Boy. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Uh, resolution to accept resignation that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby accepts the following resignation. Jordan Leonard, teacher assistant at Staley, effective August twenty sixth. Michelle Larkin, teacher assistant at Denty, effective August twenty sixth. I move the resolution. Second.
Second by Mr. Boy. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Resolution to change title. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves the following title change. Christine Kelly, teacher assistant at Bellamy to teacher aide, one-to-one at Joy, effective September first, twenty twenty one. I move the resolution. Second.
Second by Mr. Hagerty. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
Item eight, resolution to appoint teacher coordinators for twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves the following. Teacher coordinators, Christina Freeman and Carolyn McMahon as co-coordinators. For the registered nursing program. At a salary of one thousand two hundred and fifty, a stipend of one thousand two hundred and fifty each. I move the resolution. Second.
Second by Ms. McGurran, any discussion?
I just want to say uh, thank you to both Christina and Carrie. Uh, both of them were instrumental last year through COVID with our nursing staff and making sure that all protocols were up to speed with our nurses and everything that had to be done with the county and state. So uh, they were not, we did not have a nursing coordinator last year or um, through the teacher coordinator portion of the contract. These two ladies stepped up just to make sure that the nurses stayed informed. So thank you to both of them for last year and for stepping up to do this role this year.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
I'll take my goal far enough. The next people operations committee, I'm sorry, Rob or Peter did, was there anything to report me on this?
I don't think so.
Meeting.
You just read all, I mean, continuing to staff or at least that you were still interviewing all week. We'll interview more Monday, Tuesday.
This was our list as of Monday's, um, people operations committee can Jeff send us an update of the vacancy list?
I can ask them to update that tomorrow.
Just so we know how many more and are there any that we might have to? Oh, no. We're okay to.
Yeah, we we don't.
We go with that, okay. That was, we would, to ensure that we have teachers in every classroom, even though our next board meeting is not until after school starts. We would authorize for that week only for Mr. Morton and Mr. Blake to backdate the appointment so that the students can start school before.
Before our next meeting.
Our next meeting. Uh, so the next meeting, September thirteenth at five thirty, also in this office. And it's still me.
It's still you.
Um, the policy committee met last week and I have to say, thank you to everyone who participated. Um, I feel like we have a good direction going forward. So you know that we are all in the process of moving our policies from um, BOSI's to NISP. Um, Peter, can you speak to where we are with Board Docs?
I haven't had any updates from this one.
I think they were waiting for you, so let's, can the three of us try to coordinate it? Call you need for me. Um, to see what stops, because I know we're in the system. Um, I, she said something about there not being a tree. In Board Docs, so I'm not sure what that actually means.
They don't communicate with me at all, so I don't know if this was another communication for you.
Okay. Um, which is a relief to you.
Until moments like this, when you ask.
I I thought, well, the Board Doc side was you, because that's separate from from NISP.
I can tell you we paid for it.
We have paid for it. Um, so we want to move forward with trying to get that in place as soon as possible. And we would ask the board, I know how fun it is when we get a doodle call. But for us to try to schedule a time um, with Board Docs to have a training. So that we all become versed in that, because even though we'll only be transitioning our policies section at a time. Um, we can move forward immediately with using that system for our agendas. For all of our meetings, so not just our regular board meeting, but also our committees. So we'd like to be able to move forward in doing so, but we want everyone to feel comfortable in navigating. So Patty, I'll work with you this week to reach out to Board Docs and and see how long that would entail.
Next week.
And then we'll put out a doodle. Oh, when you're back from your adventure. Thank you. Um, our next, so we are working on the zeros. Expect our um, second meeting in September. That we will have several items on the agenda for approval or transition. And I hope that you have all checked your email that are in the loop. And and Peter, that one is for you. She gave me language suggestions on this week's and I'll be sending an email for next week's policy. The plan of attack that the committee has is um, they're all sections, zeros, one thousands, two thousands. We're gonna try to deal with one section per month throughout the school year. By breaking that up, a few policies a week and we're communicating via email. And then when we meet once a month, if there are any major issues or um, or any other policies that come up that we feel we need to adopt, we will do so. Um, Peter, I also have not heard if there's any amendment to the statement.
There is not.
So did we want to change?
I I would just advise taking it down at the same time, we haven't seen anything come from legal or from this, but that.
I wondered with the governor's statements if we had to.
What I would tell you is if and when stuff comes out in writing, legal counsel will update us on if there's any needed uh, adjustments to policies.
So we, Patty, do you know how we go about having that? Um, but I know that sunset on June thirtieth, it's on our policy page taken off. Thank you. Okay, next meeting, Thursday, September sixteenth. Um, normally it's the third Wednesday of the month, we had a conflict this month, so Thursday, the sixteenth at four thirty.
Hey, thank you, Davis.
Back to you.
Mislenious business. Resolution to establish committees and appoint members. Resolved that the board of education of the Rome City School Bureau hereby establishes the following advisory committees. Audit educational programs, facilities, finance, people operations and policy. And be it further resolved that the board of education appoints individuals designated on a attached addendum. As members of the respective committees and those identified as chairpersons for the respective committees. Such positions for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. I so move the resolution.
My second.
So, Ms. Davis, any discussion?
Thank you to everyone for taking the time to serve. We had a lot of good communication.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Martin Carey.
I want to miss things. Elena, we put their, Alana, Elena, I'll get it. It won't hurt me, I swear.
A and E.
Uh huh, I know, she just moved. Um, Alana, is there anything that you'd like to share with us that's upcoming or any concerns that you have as our student board member? I know you've already been busy with staffs.
Yes, um, not at the moment, right now, I think our main focus still, as I said before, is really just getting homecoming up and running. Because the dance, I know some stuff with the flow, but we have our next meeting actually Tuesday, so I'll have more information on that. But we're just trying to do what we can with what is given to us.
And for the community, the dance is tentatively slated for October second, correct?
October second is.
And October first would be the game?
That's, yes.
Right. From my new gesture calendar.
That I tore open today. Awesome.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to educational programs.
Do five minute.
Yes.
Can I take a five minute recess?
Yeah. Bye.